A beautiful space and a beautiful place to be, to raise families, to be in our churches. God, we pray as we move into this space and into this meeting, God, that you would give us wisdom, you would give us discernment, you would give us grace, that you would help us guide our steps in all of our decision making, that we would leave this meeting tonight with a sense of peace, that we moved in a way that advocated for our neighbors, for loving our neighbors, and for taking care of the least of these. And it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for being here. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, April 12th, 2021, to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully. And if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, then please bring your comment cards to the clerk as soon as possible. While Milton rules allow a speaker to turn them, their comment card up until the clerk calls the agenda item. Once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards can be accepted. Tammy, if you will please call roll and make any general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the April 12th, 2021, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley. Sorry. Councilmember Carol Kirkley.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria is absent. Councilmember Rick Morrig.
Here.
Now, tonight, we have the Sons of the American Revolution who will lead us in our pledge. Would everybody please rise?
Oh, my God.
Flag. States of America, through the Republic which stands one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. I also want to say what a pleasure and an honor it is to have the Sons of the American Revolution with us here tonight, as well as our current judge, along with several others that we're going to swear in tonight as alternate judges for the city of Milton. So, welcome you all. Tammy, will you please sound the next item?
Yes, Mayor. That next item is approval of meeting agenda, agenda item number 21-089.
Okay. I'd like to, out of respect for the folks that I just mentioned here, move up the following agenda items. Agenda item number 21-106, the swearing in of the standby judges, and agenda item number 21-108, the proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Sons of the American Revolution. I also want to, agenda, move the agenda item number 21-112, resolution appointing a new BZA member, too. Is there any other items on the agenda that, any other changes? Okay, I'll open up for a motion on the agenda.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept the changes you recommended.
Go move. Yeah, I have a motion from Councilmember Kirkley with a second by Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right. If our city clerk can please call the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. That first moved item is swearing in of part-time, full-time, or standby judges for the municipal court for the city of Milton, agenda item number 21-106. Mayor Lockwood.
Okay. And I would ask the, our new standby judges to come forward, and I will swear them in. I do want to say something, too. I really appreciate all of you that's coming in and volunteering to help out with our city. You know, the rest of us, we deal and interact with our local municipalities that we're involved and part of, but the majority of citizens of our city, their only interaction with the city of Milton is through court. And so, with that, we're proud to have you guys representing the county. Now, everybody can raise their right hand and repeat after me. I solemnly swear in affirm that I will faithfully perform the duties of, that I will faithfully perform the duties of, standby judge. Standby judge. Of the city. Of the city. And that I will support and defend the charter thereof. And I will support and defend the charter thereof. As well as the Constitution. As well as the Constitution. And the laws of the state of Georgia. And the laws of the state of Georgia. And of the United States of America. And of the United States of America. And if we can, you've got to pay for it here afterwards. I'd like to get a picture. We'll all face out a little bit if you notice. Thank you. And if you guys will just go around here and we'll face Greg. We'll do a picture. Everybody, yeah. Backup camera. All right. Thanks again. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Hey, Tammy, the next item moved on our agenda. You'll call that.
The next moved item is the proclamation recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Sons of the American Revolution, agenda item number 21-108. Mayor?
Okay. And as I said earlier, this is certainly an honor and a privilege for us to present this proclamation. For the 100th anniversary, Georgia Society, Georgia Society National Society Sons of the American Revolution. Whereas, the Sons of the American Revolution was conceived as a fraternal and civic society composed of lineal descendants of individuals who entered at Valley Forge, signed the Declaration of Independence, fought during the American Revolution, served in the Continental Congress, or supported the cause of American independence. And whereas, 16 presidents have been proud members of the Sons of the American Revolution. Whereas, the Sons of the American Revolution is devoted to perpetuate the memory of the individuals who, by their services or sacrifices during the American Revolutionary War, achieved independence for the United States, and inspiring citizens to revere the principles that their forefathers incorporated into the government of the United States, and encouraging the development of historical research about the American Revolutionary War. Whereas, over 2,000 members of the Georgia Society Sons of the American Revolution are organized in 35 chapters throughout the state, whose ancestors helped the original 13 colonies to win independence for our country. And whereas, the Piedmont Chapter, Georgia Society of the Sons of the American Revolution serves the communities of Alpharetta, Milton, East Cobb, and Roswell with patriotic, historical, and educational activities. And whereas, on March 14th, 2021, the Georgia Society Sons of the American Revolution celebrated their 100th anniversary. And now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton, express our appreciation and gratitude of the members of the Piedmont Chapter, Georgia Society Sons of the American Revolution, for their efforts to protect the legacy of our nation's founders and promote patriotism. And this is given under my hand and seal of the city of Milton, Georgia, on the 12th day of April, 2021. So, and I would like to ask that our Sons of American Revolution step forward, and I'll present this proclamation.
Titled John Milton. Whereas, John Milton was the first Secretary of State for the Revolutionary State of Georgia, and whereas it was deemed necessary to protect the Georgia State documents from British destruction, and whereas John Milton was commissioned an officer in the Georgia Battalion, and whereas, under instruction from General Lincoln, John Milton transported Georgia documents first to Purrisburg, South Carolina, up the Savannah River, and whereas the British pushed Milton to move the documents further away, he used the military wagon to transport to Charleston, South Carolina, and then to New Bern, North Carolina, and finally to Annapolis for the duration of the war. And John Milton was to be later honored by the naming of Milton County in 1857. And whereas Milton County furnished, flourished north of Fulton until January 1932, when merged into Fulton. And whereas, in December 2003, the people of North Fulton County deemed the urban community of Milton be established, and maintain the preservation of character of the urban community in both character and growth, consistent with the efforts of its namesake, John Milton, in keeping the traditions of Georgia alive during trying times. And therefore, the Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution, commend the city of Milton on its 15th year of serving and leading the community this 12th day of April, 2021. Signed, Alan Finley.
Thank you very much.
Linda, we might want one picture, Mayor, if you don't mind. Linda, if you, there we go. We'll just, if you'll hand off just one more picture.
I got one from a side.
Can I get him to hold it up for you? Can I hold it up?
Yeah, he got it. Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Tammy, if you please call the next item.
Our third and final moved item is consideration of a resolution appointing a member to the city of Milton Board of Zoning Appeals by appointing a board member at large, agenda item number 21-112. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay. Some of you may know my previous BZA appointment, Jake Ward, moved to the great state of Florida in February of this year. And I am happy to appoint Stephanie Butler to the BZA. She'll provide a great contribution to the BZA. And Stephanie, I appreciate your willingness to step up. Known Stephanie several years, great member of the community. I think she really cares and will do a great job. So, I'd like to open up for a motion on appointing Stephanie Butler to the BZA as my appointee.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Stephanie Butler as your appointee to the BZA.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Jameson with a second from Councilmember Morrig. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. So, Stephanie, if you would step forward. And again, I want to say, I thank all of our volunteers and citizens, and that's, you know, the things that you do and the time you spend and all that really makes a difference, and that's what makes Milton great. So, that goes without saying. Thanks to everybody. I have to take a double take on that. You can't tell if there is, uh, thanks, Stephanie. If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear and affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
That I will faithfully perform the duties of.
Board of Zoning Appeals.
The Board of Zoning Appeals.
Of the city.
Of the city.
And that I will support and defend the charter thereof.
And I will support and defend the charter thereof.
As well as the Constitution.
As well as the Constitution.
The laws of the state of Georgia.
And the laws of the state of Georgia.
United States of America.
And the United States of America.
There. Let me sign this.
All in there? Yep. Good. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Stephanie. Thank you.
Stephanie, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Tammy, do we have any public comment tonight?
I do not, Governor.
All right, Tammy, if you would, please call the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. That item is approval of the January 20th, 2021, city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 21-090. The second item is approval of the February 1st, 2021, city council meeting minutes, agenda item number 21-091. Our third item is approval of a software subscription agreement between the city of Milton and Rare Step Inc. for fleet management software, agenda item number 21-092. Our next item, approval of subdivision plats and revisions. The location and the name of the property is R.L. Glosson Property, located at 310, 320, 330, and 390 Hickory Flat Road, Land Lot 304, 345, District 2, Section 2. It is a minor plat, and it's to revise division line between lots 1 and 3 to add recoding of Declaration of Covenants, revise ingress/egress utility easement, add water line easement, and update FEMA flood map, agenda item number 21-093. Our fifth item, approval of an outside providers and facility use agreement between the city of Milton and Davis Educational Services, LLC, to provide education camps and classes, agenda item number 21-094. Our sixth item, approval of an outside providers and facility use agreement between the city of Milton and Wavelength Learning Group to provide music camps, classes, and lessons, agenda item number 21-095. Our seventh item is approval of a change order to number, change order number one to professional services agreement with Pond and Company to provide engineering design services for Morris Road Widening and Big Creek Greenway Trail Connection, agenda item number 21-096. Our next item, approval of a change order to task order number three with Pond and Company to provide engineering design services for Morris Road Widening, agenda item number 21-097. Our ninth item, approval of a task order agreement with BM and KPC for the construction inspections of the fiscal year 21 citywide asphalt resurfacing project, agenda item number 21-098. Next, an approval of a task order agreement with BM and KPC for the right-of-way acquisitions and pre-construction services for the Hopewell Road and Bethany Bend/Bethany Way Intersection Improvement Project, agenda item number 21-099. Our 11th item is approval of a change order number four to the facilities landscaping, sport field maintenance, and park and field maintenance agreement between the city of Milton and Triscapes, Inc., to add the new Lakeside Park facility, agenda item number 21-100. Next is an approval of a goods and services contract with Municipal Equipment Company, LLC, for the purchase of fire rescue structural personal protective equipment, agenda item number 21-101. Our 13th item is approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton, Georgia, and Digital Insurance, LLC, doing business as One Digital to provide actuarial services to review the city's current retirement plan and develop an early retiree health benefit plan, agenda item number 21-102. Next, approval of a revised contract to reflect Atlanta Retirement Partners' change of broker/dealer and registered investment advisor relationship from LPL to One Digital, agenda item number 21-103. Our next item, approval of a change order number one between the city of Milton and CPS HR Consulting extending professional services agreement for the completion of the employee engagement survey until 9:30 2021, agenda item number 21-104. Our final consent agenda item is approval of an application to the Georgia Department of Transportation for funding through the fiscal year 21 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant Safety Action Plan, agenda item number 21-105. Mayor?
Hey, do I have a motion on the consent agenda items?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, if we can move on to reports and presentations, if our city clerk will please call them out.
That first item is presentation of the city of Milton Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Audit, agenda item number 21-107, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This past year has been most interesting with the pandemic and its impacts on daily operations. I'm happy to report that while the state did offer extensions to the financial reporting deadlines for fiscal year 2020, Milton was able to complete its annual audit field work and publish its comprehensive annual financial report in record time. For those interested, both the comprehensive annual financial report and the popular financial annual report are available for review on the finance page of the city's website. For FY 2020, Milton obtained an unmodified or clean audit opinion from the city's external audit team at Malden and Jenkins, LLC. And with us tonight to present the auditor's discussion and analysis is our team lead and partner with Malden and Jenkins, Mr. Adam Fraley.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, for having me here this evening. I am Adam Fraley with Malden and Jenkins, here to present the audit of the financial statements for the city of Milton for the year ended September 30th, 2020. And you should have in your packets the Conference of Annual Financial Report, as well as the audit discussion analysis, which kind of summarizes the results of the audit, some of the highlights of the numbers, and some of our required communications. I'm going to go through this, if you want to follow along, and I'll kind of try to tell you what page, if you want to turn with me there. So, as Bernadette mentioned, it was an unusual year. A lot of new A lot of new funding, a lot of new transactions. And she is correct, in record form, the City of Milton completed its audit this year on, from a timing standpoint. So first and foremost, a huge pat on the back because that all goes back to the city's finance department and all their, you know, assistance in helping us with this audit. If you turn to page two to me, with me in, I'm going to call it the ADNA. You'll see their information. We are a full-service CPA firm with a large niche practice in the governmental sector. You'll see there, we serve approximately 550 governments across the Southeast. Myself, I was the engagement lead partner. We had Will Durzus, who was the engagement manager, and Brittany Wishmeyer, who was our engagement senior out here and facilitating the conduct day-to-day of the audit engagement. On the next page, as I mentioned, a full-service firm that provides services to other industries. You'll see there, as well as just other services we provide, so just some information. Oh, thank you. That's even better. Okay, and then on page four here, the financial statements are the responsibility of the city. The city's finance department is required annually to put together a set of financial statements and have those statements audited by external CPA. And then submit those in accordance with state law to the state of Georgia Department of Audits. The city obviously did put together, they keep the books and records on a monthly basis and year-end basis, that we did come in and audit those. We issued what is technically called an unmodified audit report. We call that a clean opinion. What that means is the financial statements are considered to present fairly the financial position and the results of the operations in all material respects as of and for the year ended September 30th, 2020. You'll see there on the next page, over and above what the state of Georgia requires, the City of Milton also puts together a comprehensive annual financial report, which also has the sections for the introductory section you'll see there, and also the statistical section. Those are other elements and sections within the comprehensive annual financial report. The introductory obviously introduces and is up front, and the stats section is in the back. I'd encourage you to look at that. Also, there's an MDNA, the Management Discussion Analysis, in there that gives kind of a synopsis of kind of what went on behind the numbers during the year. And then the stats section in the back gives 10 years of information, both just statistical and non-statistical information relating to the City of Milton. So a lot of good information in addition to the actual financial statements themselves are included in such a document. The city also gets an award for their comprehensive annual financial reports. The city for the 2019 comprehensive annual financial report received an award for excellence in financial reporting from the GFOA, which is a national organization. If you meet their program requirements, they will give such an excellence in financial reporting award. The city does also plan to and has submitted that for the 2020 report as well. So a huge pat on the back for going above and beyond what state law requires and providing such a good document. It takes a lot of time, a lot of effort goes into it. So really good there. On the next couple of pages, just some of the number highlights. The city ended its year with total assets of about $190 million, offset by liabilities of about $61 million. That leaves about $129 million in net position, which is the equity of the city as a whole. Only about $24.8 million of that is actually unrestricted and considered available for operations. And the remaining parts of that $129 million is in capital-type assets and then actual net assets that are restricted by outside parties or enabling legislation. The city, at the top of page eight there, you'll see, rather, that the city did report a change in net position, a positive change of about $14 million. And then the city's general fund on the rest of that page there, obviously being the main operating fund of the city, you'll see a chart there at the bottom breaking down the revenue sources of the general fund. And then also, in similar fashion, on the top of page nine, you'll see a breakdown of all the general fund expenditures for the year in the pie chart there. And then at the bottom, you'll see a comparison going over the last six years of revenues compared to expenditures for each year and how they have behaved. And then that change between revenues and expenditures obviously is the net change in fund balance for the general fund. And you'll see this year, there was a $2.6 million addition to fund balance for the general fund. The next couple of pages are kind of Cliff Notes version to the comprehensive annual financial report. So you can look back there as you're looking at that and see just kind of a little Cliff Notes explanation of what those notes are meaning. And then on page 13, it gets into our required communications, just to hit a couple of things here, you know, related to, you know, any difficulties encountered in the audit, any disagreements with management. We're happy to say we didn't have any difficulties encountered in the audit. We didn't have any disagreements with management concerning any, you know, new or confusing accounting standards or any disagreements whatsoever, but, you know, certainly ones that would impact the financial results or statements presented here. On the next page there, we did have a few audit adjustments. They were discussed with management, posted to the general ledger system, accounting system of the city, and also included in these financial statements to, again, ensure their correctness. The other thing on there, independence, of course, we are independent, that's very important. We take an external look at it. We have to maintain the independence, which, under our standards, has a set of criteria to make sure we maintain that. And we do give a kind of a fresh external independent look. On the next page, we did not have anything, anything that the standards required reported as a finding. We, so great results there as well. We did have one thing that we just often refer to as management points. It was small in nature, but we did want to point out, and we discussed this with management as well, and for not accruing some liabilities at year-end, about $14,000. You know, again, that was not material to the financial statements, but one thing is kind of a byproduct of the audit. And then, you know, we're roughly halfway through this document. The other half of this document is all the new accounting standards coming out. So I'm not going to go into detail on all of those, just to know that just by volume, you can see there's a lot going on with GASB, which is the standard-setting body. They did give us a little bit of leeway with COVID, and they delayed by either 12 months or 18 months. A lot of the new standards coming out, but that's going to start hitting next year, so as far as needing to implement those. So the rest of the document, we just want to keep finance, council, everybody abreast of those new standards that are coming out and how they'll affect the financial statements. And you'll see, you know, if you're having trouble sleeping, those are there, you can read those. Certainly call us if you have any questions, we'd be glad to help. And that concludes my presentation, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer this.
Any questions, Adam? Okay. Thank you very much for.
Yes, thank you.
And obviously Bernadette and all your team and our staff, thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it, and you make us proud. Okay, Tammy, if you'll please call the next item.
The next item is the presentation of Cox Road Athletic Park Field Enhancements. Agenda item number 21109, Mr. Tom McElveen.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. What I have for you this evening is a presentation for the Cox Road Athletic Complex and field and park improvements, enhancements as well. What I'm going to talk about are these six things. The field capacity, current utilization of those Milton facilities that we have. Explain recommended changes for Cox Road. Advantages to artificial turf versus grass. Show possible configurations at Cox Road Athletic Complex. That'll make more sense once we look at the changes. And then cost figures for these proposed enhancements. But first, I just wanted to give you kind of a background on where we are in the current state of our programming. We have Eagle Sticks Lacrosse on the girls' lacrosse side. They've got about 240 girls this spring. On the boys' side, there's the Talon Lacrosse, that's the Milton program, and Cambridge Youth Boys for Cambridge. Those boys' programs are about 260 kids. Then we have North Atlanta Football League. Last fall, they had about 100 kids in the programming that was hosted at Milton Parks. And then we have Hopewell Youth Association this spring. There are about 850 kids playing in the baseball program. And then we also have the Rush Union Adult Soccer Program. They are primarily run out of Cox Road Athletic Complex. And over the winter, they had about 100 adults playing, and last fall, it was 180. The winter's just a slower season. Here's the current state of our athletic fields. The City of Milton, we're currently overcapacity on rectangular turf fields. Since the year 2015, we've had significant increase in our registrations. Let's go into what a rectangular field is. A rectangular field hosts lacrosse, football, soccer. Typically, in a recreational setting, one rectangular field can host any of those sports. And we have some at Bell Park. We have two at Bell Park that are turf. We have the IGA school fields for all the schools in our city. There are four schools that we use, and at Northwestern Middle School, we have three fields available to us. We have the Cox Road Athletic Complex with currently, which currently has two and a half fields, there was one field that's much smaller. And then we have the Birmingham United Methodist Church, which is a baseball complex. But let's go into the master plan real quick. The master plan in 2017 called for two more rectangular athletic fields to meet 2017 standards and another two more to meet 2027 standards. Cox Road got us two fields since 2017. However, they included all those IGA fields at Fulton County Schools in their calculations. And those, those fields have a lot of limitations. There's no lights, they're all grass, they're used for recess at school, so they get beat up. But one of the, one of the biggest ones is there's no quality accessible restrooms at these fields. You know, we have to rent portable restrooms and have them sitting outside for the kids. Master Plan did also call for six more baseball fields, and the Birmingham United Methodist Church did fill one of those spots. Let's talk about Bell Memorial Park now. Bell Memorial Park is definitely our flagship active park for the city. At any given time in the spring season, you can see three, four teams practicing on one field at Bell Memorial Park at a time, on the rectangular fields. Staff recommends one to two teams, two is good per field. The reason for that, safety, quality of the program. You know, if you have too many kids on a field, it's hard to run a really efficient practice. And it hinders skill development for the kids. Our program providers do work together to share field space. How do they work together? Well, they have, before the spring season, we have a Springfield allocation meeting. And in that meeting, all of our programs that share space, they all express their needs, and we do the very best we can to get everyone field space that they require. This past spring, it became a bit of a challenge. Sharing is just, is, with our current capacities we have, it's getting tough. And everyone prefers to practice on the artificial turf. There's, there's no secret there. Now we have the Cox Road Athletic Complex. Currently, right now, the fields at Cox Road are utilized at about a 16% utilization rate. That is low. But the reason being is because our program providers would rather put more kids on a turf field than have practice at a grass field. We also have the Rush Union Soccer, which I mentioned earlier. They take two late evening slots per week from seven, from roughly seven to 10 o'clock at night. And then we have our youth lacrosse programs, they do take a few slots, but it's, it's three slots out of 45. So it's very low. So what can we do to increase this field utilization out at Cox Road? This concept was brought forth to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board in the December 2020 meeting and the January 2021 meetings. And they supported this plan. It calls for two multipurpose artificial turf fields. And in this design, it accommodates the needs of all the sports that we have field capacity issues with. Baseball, lacrosse, football, and the adult soccer. Don't, don't get too tied up in this graphic here. This is just something that we created. You can put any line combinations on this field. But this just lays out a lacrosse field over a baseball field, and we can put football and soccer lines on as well. And some can be sewn in, and some you can just paint, and then the paint goes away. So if you have a one-season sport, you might not want to paint all those lines. Let's talk about some of the advantages to artificial turf. Rainouts, this is the number one reason. Every spring season, it rains a lot in the beginning of the spring, and you lose a lot of practice time. 20 to 25% of field time is lost. Poor field conditions due to the rainy weather, too. You have a rainy day, especially at Cox Road, it could knock out the field for three days, even though it rained on just one. The water sits, and that causes our programs to want to schedule their practices at Bell Memorial Park where there's turf. It also has better playability. It's always the same, and no matter how much it rains, it's always playable. I've only seen one turf field over in Alfreda. Went underwater, I was, I was there at a soccer tryout. It was, it was glass. Rain stopped, five minutes later, they were on the field playing. And then the aesthetics, too. You know, artificial turf, it looks great year-round, doesn't go dormant. So that design that I had shared gives you multiple configurations to the field. You can do A, one practice slot, B, the next practice slot, and then C, and the third practice slot. You're not locked in to one particular setup. And that gives us a lot of flexibility. So if we're, one season, you know, maybe lacrosse numbers are down, well, then we'll have more access for baseball fields, or vice versa. Baseball numbers are down, we have more space for lacrosse, football, soccer. So this, this just gives us a lot of flexibility as to how we schedule. What will this do to the utilization of Cox Road? Changing these fields to turf will increase our capacity up to 80 to 90% at Cox Road Athletic Complex. Ideal field utilization hovers between 80 and 85%. Why not 100%? If you fill the fields up at 100% capacity with your scheduled programming, that typically means the last team gets whatever the last slot available is. So when you operate at 80 to 85%, everybody's always happy, and you get, and you get a better program out of it. At the end of the day, we're going to, this, this complex, if this were to happen, would be running at, I would say, the higher 90% range. It also allows, with the lower utilization rates, you also get more flexibility. So if there's, you know, if there's rainouts at another field, you can do makeups and have overflow onto those fields. And it also prevents over-usage. It would also have an impact on baseball. Baseball's capacity could potentially increase as well. Each unshared, each unshared field would give baseball capacity for another 150 kids. To the cost. To turf the two fields, you'd have to put fencing and netting up. And there is an optional cool infield surface. What that is, is there's little rubber pellets that are inside the turf. They make some that don't attract the heat of the sun. And the turf field will operate in the summer and late spring 50 degrees cooler. I've had a turf field melt the sole of my shoe before. They get hot, they get hot in the summer. The estimate is about 1.3. The estimate is about 1.3 to 1.6 million is what I'm estimating for the two turf fields and everything that goes along with it. What are some cost benefits to turfing the fields? We'll have a rough, rough savings of 50 to 65,000 per year. Won't have to worry about grass maintenance. There's nothing to mow. There is, there is some brushing of the field, but it's once or twice per season. And just clean up, have water savings. You know, you won't have to worry about watering the grass and no need for re-sodding heavily worn areas. The long-term cost, the cost, the cost to replace the carpet, and it lasts about 10 to 12 years, is about $700,000 today. The carpet cost is less than the cost of actually doing all the, the entire project because there's no grading that needs to be done when you're replacing the carpet. There's no drainage systems that need to be installed. And there's no base layer of all the, the rock and gravel that gets put in. It is more costly to convert these fields to artificial turf, but the benefits are valuable. Moving on to the small field. This was the small half-field I referred to earlier. It is not utilized nearly as much as it could be if we had a youth soccer program here. It was currently, it was designed for under 10 age soccer. And currently, we, we use it for overflow rainout practice for one very small under-nine lacrosse team. That's about the only quality usage it really gets. Some, some options that we discussed besides what I'm about to show you, batting cages or just like a leave it as is as a warm-up field for the other two fields. This is what we came up with. Constructing three tennis courts. Three tennis courts would accommodate six additional tennis teams. The capacity increase of 80 to 100 tennis team players per season. That cost estimate is about $200,000 and that would include the court fencing and lighting that would need to be done. The master plan, the comprehensive master plan in 2017 said we needed four more courts. This would knock out three of them and then we would need five more by 2027. And we know at the master plan at the former Milton Country Club, there, there is a plan for two more courts there. So that would get us to our 2027 number exactly. inclusion. Why does Cox need to be artificially turfed? Our residents want it. It reduces rainouts. It'll increase the utilization of what are, one of our city assets. It'll spread our programs across the city a little more evenly. Baseball would have an opportunity to increase some of their diamond space and lacrosse would have opportunity to access turf fields. And on the tennis courts, the increased court capacity will get us within one court of those 2017 standards, as I mentioned. And it would also allow for more tennis teams to participate in the Milton Tennis Center that Terry can currently not accommodate. He turns, he turns folks away every spring and fall. And this would, this would allow him to take those residents that are looking for a place to play. The total cost for the entire project is about one and a half to 1.8 million. And tonight, I'm looking for a little bit of guidance and suggestions on how we can move forward.
You know, I'd first comment. The cost there's the turf. And looking at the numbers, it's not necessarily a, well, it does save some costs in maintenance. It's still a big, a big chunk of money additional that we don't recoup just with savings. But that being said, obviously, you can get a whole lot more use out of it as you explain. So my question would be, safe to say that, because it gets used a lot more, a lot more programs, at least some of the cost could be with program fees or participation?
Yes, and you, we could also recoup some fees with rental opportunities. Bell Park is often requested for tournaments and things like that. And we would have the opportunity to have more fields. Typically, Bell's never, never available, but if we had more fields available to us in those off-seasons, we could recoup some costs with rentals as well.
I guess more athletes, too. You could, more participation, which is, safe to say that would play into it, too?
Yes.
Thank you, that was very helpful presentation. Though I had heard some of the lacrosse families maybe complain about the current lighting at Cox Road. Is, is that an issue? Being too low or being interfering with?
The conver, the conversation that I had with, with one particular gentleman was he was referring to the smaller turf field that we would be potentially swapping over to a different use and changing the lights altogether. I did not get any feedback on the two rectangular fields.
So the lights that are there would be, they could stay in place and wouldn't have to be redone?
Yes, they're only five years old.
Okay, good. He didn't, he didn't mention it was the smaller field, so that's good news, so.
I, I took the same thing away at first and then we dug deeper.
Thank you. On the tennis courts, the, though, doing the tennis courts at Cox Road, would that, would that come before the Milton Country Club courts? Or would it just fall into a master plan? The timing of it is what I'm trying to understand.
That could be either or.
Okay.
Depends on when we do the work. If you approve moving forward Cox Road, it likely get the courts in Cox Road before we would get the courts up at the Milton Country Club. Because that would be the next phase of the Milton.
So it would just make sense to do it all together? We would probably get some benefit cost-wise out of asphalting the courts at the same time as the turf?
I would think that could be a possibility. Yep.
I'd be interested in that just because, you know, with the courts at Milton Country Club, I don't know, I'd just like to know more about that. Because with the, the half-field, I mean, it just might give us a little bit more flexibility going forward if there was some sort of soccer program that came in. But if it satisfies the tennis, you know, master plan for tennis courts, I, I understand that. And I think it's a good thing to spread the facilities out throughout the city. And that was my only other question was, you know, making sure that going to Cox Road, the providers will see that with these changes as a desirable place to go. That it's not, you know, it says, is much of, you know, it's probably not going to be like as nice as Bell Memorial, but we just need to make sure that the fields are as good and that they will travel there to play.
Yeah, they will. When you look at our lacrosse program specifically, we have two organizations that work together to become our boys program. One's the Milton side and Cox Road is very close to Milton High School. And those, a lot of those teams would happily drive over to Cox Road to practice.
Right, that's good news.
Tom, thanks. Good, good presentation. We've got a couple of follow-up questions. If we're able to go forward with something like this, is there a season that's lost during construction of the fields when you're not able to use it at all because it's being converted from one type of field to another?
If you can time it just right, you might be able to get through a summer or a winter where the activity is very light. So yeah, you could, you could time it where a, a heavy season you could, you cannot miss out on for sure. But the spring and fall are the two heavy seasons for your athletics.
You potentially would not lose a heavy season.
Correct.
You might lose a lighter.
A lighter season that we could re, we have flexibility in those off-seasons. We could, we can move elsewhere.
Because I, one of the things that obviously it impacts when you lose a season is the ROI because you haven't got cost of participation coming into your coffers for participants coming in.
This would certainly be planned in an off-season.
Does, at the end of the day, does it then leave us with no grass fields? It would all be turf?
Besides our baseball fields, all of our rectangular fields and our inventory.
But soccer, lacrosse, and football, for example, would all be turf? How does that, how does that position us competitively with programs in the surrounding area? Are we then like everybody else? Or are we then better than everybody else? Or is it, put us in the mix?
We would probably be better than everybody else at that point. Because on par or better.
Are there surrounding communities that are still playing on grass? Or our kids, if they're going to go play on grass, would suddenly be on a new, you know, unfamiliar surface? If they don't have any grass option available at all in Milton?
No, the, the conversion, the conversion to turf is becoming a standard practice.
The 180 grand for the cool pellets, I guess I'll call it. How often does that have to be replenished?
When the carpet's replaced. In fact, I believe you can recycle it, so it's a one-time.
Theoretically, 10 years as well. Fantastic. In the presentation, primarily focused on the fields, but in, in passing, you commented about the fact that we did not have any rest, quality restroom facilities. Is that contemplated in this plan in the 1.5 to 1.8 bathroom considerations?
That was for the Fulton County IGA fields. Cox Road has bathrooms.
Okay.
Hey, jog my memory, did we not, didn't we? Go with turf, didn't that, not by Mr. Craig?
I apologize.
I remember details on it, but I do know we talked about, obviously, if we purchased it, that we would have opportunities that we would.
I just thought this was in our.
Improving the, approving the facilities there were without a doubt part of the plan. I just don't recall if we specifically mentioned the turf.
Okay, I thought that we did. Look, I'm in support of it because no point if it's not.
Yeah, just two, two questions, Tom. First one, how do you, I'm curious, how do you accommodate the baseball configuration with the pitching mound and running bases? How do you accommodate that with the, with the turf conversion? How do you go in and out between them?
The, the turf mounds, even actually at Bell Park, all of our grass fields, there's fiberglass mounds that you pick up and move.
That would be the same thing?
It would be the same thing. And there's base, and there's specific bases for turf fields that are extremely heavy, that don't move. So you just pick them up and move.
So it would still be turf, you would just outline where the?
Yep, you would play lacrosse on the baseball field and you'd play, yep.
And then the other question, or towards Steve, is from, where would this put us from a financial standpoint? We've got the price tag, how does this fit into where we are if we authorize us and go ahead? Something we had in reserve or planned?
We would use about 1.13 million in impact fees from the parks category. The remaining 467,000 would be covered by operating funds. This time, we have about 80,000 in the Cox Road account and we can move the remaining 387 plus thousand dollars from the park land acquisition account to accomplish the purchase. Something around there. Just happens to be open in front of me.
Sounds good.
You guys talked before the meeting.
Good answer.
A quick question. You mentioned the IGA fields. Are those, are those being used now? Because I know with COVID, Fulton County Schools weren't allowing us to use that. Are we using those now?
Not right now.
Okay, yeah, see, I'm starting to, I used to think that was such a great idea, having these cooperations and stuff. But now I'm starting to think we need to start testing in our fields as much.
And it's the lights in the restrooms that really hold them back. Especially when you have a park like Bell Park in the inventory. Makes it tough to schedule elsewhere.
I'm all, I'm all in favor of this. I get, when I get the baseball fields every Wednesday and Saturday, every lacrosse parent just pulls, just tide. I agree with them, it's pretty crowded out there.
So obviously, we can give you some direction tonight. But explain the pro, the process. These are estimates you have. Obviously, if, if the council gives a blessing to move forward, Ellen fine, fine tune all of this and at some point, it will come back before us. And once you design and bids and things like that, is that safe to say? I mean, my point being, if we give our blessing to move forward with this, they're going to come back before us, final numbers and action items and whatnot, correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so I, I will ask, you know, I'll, I'll speak, but then ask council, you know, kind of give a, give a up or a down. Or in that direction.
Paul?
Yeah, one more question. Tom, you talked about the turn, potential for tournament play. Does this put us in play for being considered in the mix of tournaments that do, you know, take place in North Fulton? Do we become suddenly a player in the mix with what we're doing here, which would be fantastic? And it helps small business, it could help occupancy in our hotel?
Potentially, yeah, because you've got Bell Park and if this were to happen, you'd have four fields that someone could come in and then you can host something big. It all doesn't have to be at one site. So yes, to answer your question.
Yeah, fantastic.
Yeah, so in general, is the council favorable?
Yeah. Okay.
I just wanted one quick, just, I'm interested in the tennis court, you know, differential. If, because we have been talking about these extra courts at Milton Country Club. So it seems like we're changing the direction and I'd just be interested to know how much of a savings it is to do tennis courts along with the turfing of the fields or, you know, how, how that looks to stay on course with the Milton Country Club plan versus putting the courts over there. Something, you know, there's.
Happy to look into it.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Hey, Tammy, if you'll call the next time.
That next title is presentation of the city's new financial transparency and active parks portal. I'm sorry, active projects portal. Agenda item number 21110, Ms. Bernadette Harville.
Good evening again. A little shorter than Tom. Tonight, I am very excited to share with you the city's new transparency and active projects portal. Last fall, you all approved a contract with ClearGov for a subscription to their transparency projects and dashboards module, as well as their budgeting and digital budget book module. These tools will help Milton staff with both internal and external enhancements to our communication and transparency regarding financials and ongoing city projects, performance metrics, and initiatives. A big thank you goes out to all of our staff who have each been instrumental in getting this new portal up and running. And a special thank you goes out to Jen Hartwig and Sarah Leaders, who have graciously agreed to be co-administrators with me to ensure that the portal stays up to date for everybody. The new portal has several capabilities, including demographics, and to look into our current debt, our checkbook, financial transparency, active projects, and department dashboards. In the corner, you can kind of see a little snapshot of what the main page looks like. It has our logo out there, mentions Mayor Lockwood. It has some of our demographics and you can scroll down and it has a bunch of other overview information. Just wanted to go into some of the demographics that it provides really quickly. They're currently defaulted to the data sourced from the U.S. Census Bureau up to 2018. All of the per capita expenses throughout the financial transparency section are derived from these figures. We do have the ability to utilize our local projections provided in Milton's community profile, which is published annually by Georgia Power and Esri or any other reputable source we deem fit. But at this time, we have left the setting to its default. You can see that this default data provides in-depth statistics, including population counts and growth. The data is also broken down by daytime population and population by age group. The demographics also include other categories such as economic data and housing statistics that I think our residents would be interested to see. The financial transparency portal is visually appealing and easy to understand. It provides access to historical and current data and financial trends. Users will have the ability to drill down into the data to each line item. So you can see potentially what we've budgeted and currently spent on apparatus repair and maintenance in the fire department, patrol equipment in the police department, and the other categories. Each of these brings down to per fiscal year and also per capita figures. Again, those per capita figures drive back to our 2018 U.S. Census Bureau at this time. So it's just, hasn't been that much growth, so you can kind of figure in where that per capita expense is. Here, you can see a little snapshot of our fund balances over time and our current financial overview showing our revenues versus expenses for our F. Here you can see a little snapshot of our fund balances over time and our current financial overview showing our revenues versus expenses for our FY 2021 budget and then historical back to 2015. And we can go back further if we'd like. For now, we just gave it that 2015 to 21 snapshot. Here you can see a picture of a sample pie chart for the FY 2021 revenues and collections through January 31st, 2021. I kept them in line with what you have all seen in the annual, or sorry, the monthly financials that you've approved. And just each time we give you the monthly financials and you approve them, we'll go out to the portal and update those correspondingly. On the right-hand side, you can see our expenditures in a different view in a mountain chart. And each of those expenditures is broken down by functions and you can see the past years back to 2015 as well. And in the bottom left-hand corner, you can see there that per capita figure for taxes specifically, what our current budget is, and then all the actuals for the prior years. One of the new features of this portal that we are really excited about is the active projects module. This tool will allow staff to provide up-to-date project descriptions, links to presentations and supporting documentation, project locations within the city, budget information, contact for a project manager. So if anyone has any questions, they can contact them directly. Project, a projected timeline with updates and the ability for the person to subscribe directly to that particular project for real-time alerts. Each time we go in and make an update to that project, if you're subscribed, you will get a little email that says there's been new information updated. So you can see it right then and there. Here we have a little sample of Fire Station 42 replacement. And that's just a little snapshot of the top part of the description of the project and some of the images we have going on. Next I have a sample of a specific project so you can see exactly what information is available. This is the city map and the location of each of the projects. You can drill down on the left-hand side, there's links where you can go to the map itself. Here we have the Hopewell at Thompson Intersection Improvement Project that is being funded through T-Sploss Funds. Sarah has linked all of the supporting materials and aided in the breakdown of the project budget by the categories of planning and design, right-of-way acquisition and construction. We can go in there, we can do it by a month, fiscal year, whatever anyone would like to see it by. We thought this was the most meaningful for these projects at this time. At the top, you can see the project, the projected expenditure estimate for the whole project and what we've spent to date. We're able to show what phase of the project we're currently in in that blue bar and give the details, like I said, for the project manager of each project. And as you can see, Sarah spent a great deal of time outlining each step on this projected, this project timeline. So we're able to have projected information as well as current updates. And each one of those has the ability to put a large amount of information, you can drill down to the view more to see even more details in each step of the project. Another new feature of this portal is the dashboards feature. This is where we'll be able to provide staff updates to the public on the current five-year strategic plan as well as department metrics. Each metric that you all approved in the strategic planning process will be presented and tracked here along with the department-specific performance metrics and other information that will be of interest to our community. As I mentioned earlier, the city's ClearGov platform also provides two additional resources for staff, a budgeting platform that will help us streamline collaboration during the budgeting process. And in addition, we'll be able to create various budget versions and scenarios with supporting documentation in one place that we can compare and come up with the best plan for the next year. And finally, that data will feed straight into a digital budget book platform that will save us time and ensure compliance with GFOA's requirements for the distinguished budget award presentation. Over the next week or so, I'll be working with Greg Batello, Communications Director, to coordinate press releases and make this link accessible to the public. Like I said, we are really excited. This is gonna give live time information to everybody about things that they've been really interested about. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about the new portal.
Okay, any questions from Brenda?
Comment?
You guys, most of you probably know, that's all way over my head. I think Steve asked me the other day, you happen to know your ID, Apple ID, something, something?
I'm there with you, Mayor.
Go ahead. Laura, Paul, Laura.
Well, just a suggestion. So this is awesome and I know this has taken a lot of time and effort. So I would love to see something on the dashboard that says, how are your Milton tax dollars utilized? And a pie chart that shows how well we use our tax dollars. And, you know, I would hope maybe someday it will be included with the tax bill as well. But I think we do a great job with that. And the pie chart seems to help a lot when people get their tax bill. There's, you know, just a short tutorial on taxes. There's the Fulton County tax portion and then there's the Milton tax portion and how it's used within our city. Cause I think we have a really strong story there.
Absolutely. We have a lot of great information in our budget book that I can pull right into the portal and we can do an extensive additions to it as well. So that's a great, I love that idea.
Frequently asked questions, the things that you're gonna get. That's exactly what we need to do. We just need to be very aggressive with it.
Absolutely. We can tailor this, you know, it says it's a department dashboard. We can tailor it however we want and make any kind of category we'd like to. So that's absolutely doable.
Come, come bill, tax bill time, we'll want that to be the very first, you know, landing page.
I can picture it. Now you're gonna have a pie chart with the big, big piece and three items that gets covered in that. And then you have a small one that's Milton and about 100 items in there. Nope, good idea. Anybody else? Rick?
How do you access this? Is it from our webpage?
We are gonna put a link right on the webpage. You can click and it'll take you out to the portal. There's ways, once you're in there and you get used to it, you'll see each individual product page has its own link. So if you want to remember that link, you can have it. There's a bunch of different ways to access it.
But from an easy use, once I go to the webpage-
Right on the main page, we'll put a link.
Then I can see it and actually go out to it. Great.
Absolutely.
You won't even realize you're leaving our webpage, right?
And Greg will figure out how to do it from Facebook.
Yes. I'm holding him to it. Yeah, it's a web link. So we'll be able to attach it to Twitter, Facebook, any of those.
That's great.
Thanks for work.
Yeah, thank you very much, Brenda. Everybody else involved. Okay, we'll move on to our first presentation. Tammy, you'll read that item.
That item is consideration of an ordinance to revise and update regulations related to door-to-door sales. Agenda item number 21111. Mr. Sean McCarty? Or is it, I'm sorry, never mind. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so did we remove that?
No, no. We just have to approve it.
Yeah, yeah. First presentation, my bad. So I'll open it for motion, the first presentation.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the first presentation as read.
Second?
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore with a second from Councilmember Bentley. All in favor, please say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Okay. All right.
Always get confused on that one.
Oh, no worries. Me too. So tonight we have no items under public hearing and so we'll move on to the zoning agenda. So if our clerk will please read the rules and sound the zoning item.
At the sec, at the council meeting, where the council considers a zoning agenda, these items include rezoning petitions, modifications of zoning, use permits, and associated concurrent variances in addition to ordinances, resolutions, and tax amendments. I would like to acquaint you with some of the rules and procedures for this meeting. The applicant and all of those speaking in support of an application will be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present the petition. The opposition will also be allowed a total of 10 minutes to present its position. If time remains, the opposition will be allowed to rebut. The applicant may choose to save some time of the, save some time for rebuttal following the presentation by the opposition. Since the burden of the proof is upon the applicant, the applicant will be allowed to make closing remarks, provided time remains with the allotted time. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the city clerk prior to the beginning of the tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable, before beginning their presentation. The Planning Commission has heard the resulting agenda items and their recommendations have been forwarded to the mayor and city council for consideration and disposition. The applicant shall not submit material to the council during this meeting unless requested to do so. All material that you wish to be reviewed by the council in consideration of your application should have already been submitted to the Community Development Department and is included in the normal distribution of packages to them. When an opponent of a rezoning action has made, within two years immediately preceding the filing of the rezoning action being opposed, campaign contributions aggregate in $250 or more to a local government official of the local government, which will consider the application. It shall be the duty of the opponent to file a disclosure with the government authority of the respective local government at least five days prior to the Planning Commission meeting. A violation of relevant state statute constitutes a misdemeanor. Therefore, if you have contributed $250 or more to a council member and you have not filed a disclosure prior to the Planning Commission meeting, the city attorney strongly suggests that you have someone else speak for your point of view. Our first zoning item this evening is consideration of zoning text amendment, RZ 21-03, Section 64-106, 1609, swimming pools private as it relates to location of swimming pools on flag lots. Agenda item number 21079. Ms. Robin McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is very different. I didn't expect you all to be squished together, so it's exciting. Anyway, so good evening and, okay. So tonight I'm just gonna discuss this small text amendment that has gone through the public hearing process. First of all, just to explain a little background for the purpose of it. There have been instances where a property owner has a flag lot and wants to construct a pool where it is technically in the front yard, but it is located at the back of their house. And so I'll go through these examples that I, I gave you some hard copies so you can look at it a little more closely. This proposed text amendment would allow staff to approve the location of a pool behind the house but is technically in the front yard setback as defined by the zoning regulations for flag lots, so. This item was before the Planning Commission on January 27th in which the, they recommended a deferral to February 24th and then subsequently at the 24th. After discussion on the topic, they voted unanimously six to zero with some changes that are reflected before you tonight, as well as obviously we've had a review by the city attorney. So this is a situation of a flag lot, a subdivision. It was done prior to the, us becoming a city. But when we look at flag lots, this is actually Hopewell Road that comes along here at the roundabout. We look at the front as being the most parallel to the main road. So let's say in this instance, this is just a regular lot. It's just, you know, the front sides, et cetera. But these three lots are considered flag lots. So here is the front 60-foot setback. This would be considered the sides, side, and then this would be the rear. And again, they just kind of go on top of each other, sandwich each other. Same thing, front, sides, and then the rear here, and then again, front, et cetera. So you can see how it's organized. And in this instance, they have a shared common driveway. This is not a street. It's a common driveway with cross-access easements that are granted at the minor plat process. So in this situation, it appears that the houses are fronting or facing this shared access driveway. So again, here, this is like the front door and it has a, you know, side entry garage. This one has a side entry, but on the right side, here's the front door. And this one is, you know, more traditional to Hopewell. Here's their front. And then here's their front door. And it looks like they have even another garage or parking area in the back. So, so that's how a typical, not every flag lot subdivision's a little bit different. But in general, they're typically like this. So I want to show you the site plan that was presented to us to be able to put a pool in the yard. And so if you remember, this house is facing this common drive here. And for them to put their pool in, they had wanted to put it right here in the corner, which is behind their house. But it's technically in the front yard of the lot. So that's an example of where this, in this situation, they would need a variance to the Board of Zoning Appeals to ask for a variance to allow a swimming pool in the front yard, in the technical front yard, not their front yard that they, in a practical way, use over here. So I'm gonna give you another example that actually, this was approved, I believe, about a couple of years ago to the Board of Zoning Appeals. This is the Hampshire's off of Fremontville Road. And this is a street and here's a street. And you think, oh, that's a street. Well, no, that's not a street. That's a shared driveway again. And their legal frontage, if you can see this outline with the red, goes down to the street. Like, wow, that's pretty crazy. But technically, this is their property, not this guy's property. But in all practical instances, they don't go through this person's side yard to get to their house. They access it through the shared drive. So this is another type of flag lot. And so, and here is their front yard. Cause again, we define the front yard as being the most parallel in a flag lot to the main street. And then this is their site plan they submitted to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And so you see that they have their swimming pool in front of their house. But in all practical, any reasonable person would think, well, that's behind their house. And then this is their access. This is how they drive to get to their front and go into their driveway to get into their garage. So those are a couple of examples that we've had in the recent past requesting this type of swimming pool in the front yard. So let's go ahead and, anybody have any questions, I guess, before I go on to the verbiage?
Questions?
Yeah.
Oh, I have a quick question. Maybe you're about to get to it. Why was it deferred at the Planning Commission?
Okay, I think that at the same time, they were looking at the issue of flag lots in general.
Okay, got it.
And so I think the first meeting, they felt like they didn't want to make a decision until there was further discussion because it was more of a work session type topic at that Planning Commission. And there was additional information they had requested of staff in the February meeting. So once we presented issues about, generally about flag lots, then they felt more comfortable to be able to go ahead and address this text amendment.
Makes sense, okay.
Okay. So here, this is an administrative use permit. So this doesn't go through a public hearing process. It's just basically a building permit that we review for compliance of all these different types of requirements. So here, under detached dwellings for when you construct a swimming pool. So swimming pools, anything that's in black is what existed. And then the red is the amended redline version that was proposed by the Planning Commission as well as edited and reviewed by the city attorney. Swimming pools shall be allowed inside, inside and rear yards, not inside. But you can see the play on words, but the intent is it can be allowed in a side yard and rear yards of single-family dwellings in any district. In addition, swimming pools may also be allowed at the back of the house on a double-frontage, single-family residential lot. So they wanted, the Planning Commission had a great suggestion to be able to be more, a little more clear. So this isn't what we're really talking about when you have a double frontage. So let's say that you have a house in White Columns and you have a normal street, but then you back up to Fremontville Road. So technically you have a double frontage because you have a frontage on Fremontville and you have a frontage on White Columns Drive or whatever. And so then you would say, well, it says in the ordinance, I can't have a pool in the front yard. But this is the exception or the allowance to allow that pool on a double-frontage lot. So we go on to say, in a flag lot, swimming pools shall be allowed in the front yard provided such alternative location is approved by the department, that being Community Development, which shall approve the location if the purpose of the zoning ordinance is maintained with the proposed location. You think about, well, what is the purpose of the zoning ordinance? It's to make sense, to make, you know, public welfare to be correct. So you're not gonna typically put a swimming pool in your front yard where your front door is. You're gonna put it either behind or to the side of your house. And so this- And so this allows for the discretion of the department to approve a scenario like the two that I just presented to you. So anyway, that's what I have to present to you tonight, and so again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Questions on these?
Yeah, just for clarification, so if, you know, the value of this having this administrative availability is if it did have to go through the BZA in a variance process, that adds, you know, months to the homeowner having to get that approval?
Correct. It would-- it's usually two to three months it adds time to, depending on when they submit, so yes. Yeah. So I want to clarify something, too, that Bob made a great point. It doesn't mean that we're advocating that swimming pools be in the front yard in general for a normal lot. So if somebody wants to put a swimming pool in the front yard, they have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and ask for that variance, and that's a public hearing process, so just want to make that clear.
Right. That was-- could be my question, is we haven't extracted an opportunity for the public still to be aware, because it still has to go to the BZA?
No, not in this circumstance.
Not for flag--
Not for flag lots.
All right.
Okay, nor for double-frontage lots, because that's just logical, yeah.
Any other questions? Tammy, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
I'll close the hearing.
Oh, and let me just also interject before I close out. At the last planning commission meeting, because it's related to flag lots, we did a lot of discussion and review, and Bob came and did a great job of just talking about flag lots as well, that they directed the staff to pursue text amendments to begin the possibility or consideration of eliminating flag lots. So obviously, it's something that is coming down the pike. I would have it go to the first meeting, Community Zoning Information Meeting in May, and then it would-- if things flow along, it would be before you in August, very beginning of August. So just wanted to give you that information as well, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else? I'll open up for a motion.
Make a motion, let's go find it. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 21-079.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Jamison, and I think I heard Councilmember Moore first as a second, so. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Tammy, if you'll please call the next item.
That's our first unfinished business item, which is consideration of an ordinance of the city of Milton, Georgia, to amend Chapter 2, Section 2-54 of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia, to clarify the council meeting agenda setting process. Agenda item number 21-078. Ms. Stacy English.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. If you recall, the two February meetings that we had, we did a home rule charter revision that removed language in the charter that dealt with how agenda items are added to an agenda, and because it is very granular to have something like that in our charter. And we told you then that we would bring this forward in a-- as an ordinance amendment, so that's what we're doing tonight. The language that we're proposing to add to Section 2-54, which is called Agenda, reads, "The city manager and city clerk shall prepare an agenda of subjects to be acted on for each meeting," and we're adding or asking to add, "with the mayor, city manager, city attorney, and the joint request by two council members able to add an item to the agenda." I would like to, if we could, amend that-- amend that just a little bit and say and/or, or just remove the word "and" and say "or." So it'll read, "with the mayor, city manager, city attorney, or the joint request by two council members able to add an item to the agenda."
Yes.
What's that?
Yes.
Or.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll open up for a motion. Ken, you're good with that? I'll open up.
Mayor, I'd like-- I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 21-078.
Second. I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second, and Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Does that work with the addition?
Do you have to describe the text, or--
Oh, I was thinking--
Can we say "or"?
As claimed or as presented, I hear that.
I didn't say that. I'll say that now. I'll start over. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 21-078 as-- with the addition of the word "or."
With the replacement of the word "and" to "or."
With the replacement of the word "and" to "or."
Second. Okay. We have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Jamison. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, next, we have new business, so our city clerk will please call the item that's left on there.
That new business item is consideration of a resolution to condemn property rights needed for Hopewell Road at Bethany Bend Way, Project Parcel 8, 0.177 acres of fee simple right-of-way, 0.165 acres of temporary construction easement, and one temporary driveway easement. The owner is Alariza D. Lavasani, Mortgage Electronic Registration Systems, Inc., as nominee for SunTrust Mortgage, Inc., and SunTrust Bank, now known as Chuest Bank. Agenda Item Number 21-113. Ms. Sarah Leaders.
And if I can just make a comment, a general comment about this, and we've got a couple of items, and Ken, you know, feel free to jump in and help me. You know, when we see the condemnation word, it sounds pretty strong and pretty mean, you know, big bad government. And I just want to clarify that the city has never condemned any property other than for any reason that's in the best interest of the city, and it's also in a negotiation and a fair agreement with the property owner. So it's not that the city comes in and, we're not going to take and property, they use something else for the city that they want. And a lot of times, and I've seen that in real estate transactions before and whatnot, sometimes things take a long time. Sometimes, you know, it's a timing thing, and we have to friendly condemn something, but we're still working with the people with fair appraisals and whatnot to make sure that it's done. And I think in some of these, it's-- there's-- there's agreement between the property owners and whatnot, but sometimes it takes mortgage companies and all that, they have to have a little push to get their numbers all right to where they release and do type things, so.
Technical condemnation.
Yeah. So anyways, that's-- I just want to make that clarify, that, you know, when the average person sees that, you know, the condemnation, it's we're not taking something from someone, we're negotiating in good faith, and they have agreed, you know, to get their compensation, but they just have-- the-- it hasn't taken place yet, but this allows the city to move forward with these improvements. Is that fair to say, Ken?
Mr. Mayor, that's a nice summation. I agree with that.
All right, go ahead, Sarah, sorry.
So on this partial-- partial number eight, we have reached an agreement, just having difficulty getting all the sign-offs to proceed with the closings. So we've had the appraisal updated, and said this just puts us in a position, we're reaching a critical point on the project to award construction, so this is just preparing if, again, we're not able to get those sign-offs by the time we absolutely need to close. And Ken, do you have anything?
No, that's right. That's what my notes indicate as well, and in fact, there have been some, going to the mayor's point, some technical issues that also sort of require us to at least get ourselves ready if we have-- not really even about necessarily disagreeing on the price, although certainly that can be a part of it, but a lot of it's timing. I don't know if we're ready, so.
And to that point, you know, basically, this is just to allow these projects to proceed along schedule. All the thing-- at some point, it will all be documented, signed, closed, whatnot, just as though it, you know, could have been if we could just wait on the project, but--
On length trend.
Yeah, it's-- yeah, so, okay. Any questions, or I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 21-113.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Tammy, if you'll please read the next.
The third item is consideration of a resolution to condemn property rights needed for Hopewell Road at Bethany Bend/Way, Project Parcels 3 and 6, 0.065 acres of fee simple right-of-way, 0.062 acres of temporary construction easement, and two temporary driveway easements. Owner is Pamela Ford Jackson, as trustee of the PFAJ revocative trust dated February 7th, 2019. Agenda Item Number 21-114. Ms. Sarah Leaders.
And on this one, we're-- we're still in negotiations with the property owner. This was just again to put us in a position, if we're not able to reach a settlement by the absolute time we need to close, to be able to proceed to get title to begin the project.
Okay, and to also add to that, that gets the project started, but the city still has the interest to, you know, be fair and reasonable with the property owner and make sure that, you know, it comes out fair for all parties, so. Okay, any questions on that? I'll open up for a motion on that. I say that, and did I-- did I close the hearing on the last one, ask for public comment? I don't think I did.
Not really. All we're doing is asking for public comment, there's no hearing.
Okay, so there's no public comment on this one either, okay. Okay, now, I'll open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make motion that we approve Agenda Item Number 21-114.
Second. Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Moore with a second from Councilmember Moore in favor. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay. Tammy, if you'll call the next one.
Yes, that next item is consideration of a resolution to condemn property rights needed for Hopewell Road at Bethany Bend Way, Project Parcel 4, 0.063 acres of fee simple right-of-way, 0.031 acres of temporary construction easement, and two temporary driveway easements. Owner is Donald G. Stepanek, JP Morgan Chase Bank. Agenda Item Number 21-115. Ms. Sarah Leaders.
And this last one, we have reached an agreement with the property owner. We've been trying to close for nearly nine months, so just again, the-- to get the correct signatures needed to close.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, that's a perfect example, too, and Sarah's spot on. We've been in agreement with the property owner on price for a long time. We just can't get the bank documents we need that makes this--
Right, and hopefully this will prod the bank, because I'm sure it's fair to the property owner, but some documents from banks may say, we can't release any collateral unless, you know, something else happens, so. Okay, I'll open this one up. Is there any public comment?
There's none.
I'll open this one up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 21-115.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Sarah. Okay, we'll move on to reports. Does any-- one of council have anything they want to report on? Okay, and I'll-- yeah, I'll say happy birthday to Councilmember Bentley. Twenty-nine.
Hey.
All right.
Twenty-nine, right.
All right, we'll go to staff. Community outreach, Courtney.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I just have a brief update. It hasn't been too long since we last spoke. We continue to work on a number of projects to keep residents engaged and informed in the city of Milton. Upcoming, we have Earth Day. Earth Day is officially on the 22nd of April, but we have a lot of events before and after it, in lieu of our traditional in-person event. We have-- we'll have a social media post encouraging people to walk our newly-marked trails at Birmingham Park. I know you all are familiar with those, but we-- our staff member Anita Jupe and her family have been out and volunteering, remarking those, making sure that they are visible and well-read, and they'll soon be working with GIS to make sure that there-- there is a new and easily-followed map, and so more people can take advantage of that beautiful park. We're hosting goat yoga at Broadwell Pavilion with Atlanta Stream Farm on April 17th. We are with the Milton Equestrian Committee, assisting with the Birmingham Park Cleanup Day on April 24th, in conjunction with the Milton Land Conservancy, who is hosting that. Separate from Earth Day, we're working with Milton Fire, who is hosting animal CP-- an animal CPR clinic on the 25th of April. Then our Milton Book Trail Cleanup Day is on May 1st. That's in conjunction with local volunteers, and local volunteer Suzanne Rosenwasser, who is a local author who helps maintain that trail and choose the books for it. She also has developed a fairy garden out there, including a fairy mailbox that children have been writing letters to, so that is exciting. We are currently taking applications for our comprehensive internship program, which starts in June. And then later, we'll be working with Crab Apple Community Association for an in-person Independence Day walking parade, and plans are already on the way, already in progress for an in-person, completely normal Crab Apple Fest, which makes me very happy. The Milton Equestrian Committee, in addition to what I mentioned, is also working on other trail and improvement ideas for Birmingham Park, and I've met with staff about that. And we continue to work together with the community and other city departments to keep people connected to their city.
Are there any questions?
Thank you so much.
Courtney?
Bye.
Any other staff reports?
Mayor, I knew that word was revocable. Councilmember Jamison helped me.
You know what, I was going to call you out on it.
It just, you know, opened mouth, and it just come out.
You know, all right.
I knew it, though, for the record.
You know, sometimes it's better just to keep your mouth.
Hey, the mayor has never--
Just ask the mayor to say, "harboritum."
I knew I didn't. I knew I'd never love that one, no. All right, well, I'll open up for a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.